I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item is the invocation, be done tonight by Pastor Eldredth of the First Southern Baptist Church. If you could all rise please, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Marty Grossman.
Please join me in prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, in this month of our nation's 240th celebration of our anniversary, Father, we thank you for your blessings, we thank you for your grace that has been poured out upon us as a people, as a nation, for these years. Father, reminded this evening of the words that you spoke through your prophet Isaiah, who told us that to live in a community, whether it's a civil community like Prescott Valley, or whether it is a church committee, uh, community, people of faith who call on you as Lord, that our responsibility, first and foremost, is to feed the hungry and to help those who are in trouble. And Father, we see and we know, but we saw so clearly last week, that taking those responsibilities seriously sometimes comes with an awesomely high price. So Father, this evening, as we invoke your presence here, and your grace and your wisdom, we also pray that you would be with our brothers and sisters in Dallas, who this week are grieving tremendously, who are laying to rest husbands and fathers', sons'. Father, we pray that your grace and your peace would rest upon them, that you would undergird their steps, that you would be with the city that is in shock. And Father, we pray that even at the cost, we would continue to do so. We pray for your protection upon our police officers here in Prescott Valley. We pray for your protection on our first responders. We pray that you would encourage them, that you would uphold them, that you would wrap them in your arms of love as they serve us in our community. Father, I pray that you would be with these men and women who are gathered here this evening. We do pray for your wisdom, we pray for your grace, we pray for your peace, rest upon all of us. We pray, Father, that our hearts would be drawn toward your plan for our community. For we pray these things, in the name of our Father. Amen.
Everyone, please join me. Put your hand over your heart and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Here, our next item is roll call. Diane, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Skug is even, is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
Happily present.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Next item is scheduled announcements and presentations. First item is the Chamber of Commerce, but I don't see anyone. Oh, there he is, hiding in the back amongst the gray. Come on down.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to thank you. Every month we come here and we try to get a member up in front of you and they tell us a little bit about their business. With that being said, I would like to present the owner of All American Fried Bread, Martha McKeel.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. When I moved to Prescott Valley in 2008, I started working at the Texas Roadhouse where I met my husband Scott. He's an Arizona native from Glove and very proud of that. His grandfather was good friends with some of the local Navajo families who made apricots stuffed in fried bread and called them fry pies. So fry pies stuck with the family. Scott always thought when we moved here that a fried bread restaurant would do very well in Prescott Valley. When the little drive-through on Robert Road went up for sale, my father, Robert McKeel, thought it would be a good investment and he always wanted his own business after his retirement. When we got the building, we went to work right away. We started on recipes, our menu, overhauling the building. We added a beautiful flagpole and decided to slow roast our meats, beans, for a much better quality food than your typical drive-through, as well as fair food. We also chose to use the yeasted hand rodo. It's a higher quality and cooked in a non-trans fat oil. There are different variations of fried bread wherever you go in the U.S., but fried bread is native to the Arizona Navajo that were forced to relocate to reservation land in New Mexico. It was called the long walk. The government gave the Navajo limited food rations and they used what they were given to create fried bread. Now, 145 years or so later, there are different ways people make fried bread nationwide. Back east, they call them elephant ears. In California, it's similar to a sopapilla. And in Tennessee, my family calls them hoe cakes. Either way, it's truly an American cuisine created right here by the Navajo and has become popular nationwide. May I mention that I've yet to hear anyone say they do not like fried bread. And we thank you for the opportunity again and hope to be an asset to the community for a long time. Thank you. Oh, sorry. We're located at 5816 North Robert Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it's delicious, by the way. We've gone back a couple times. Really good. I also want to say, we did the ribbon cutting for the unveiling of the Northern Arizona Suns Court today. Councilmember Grossman, Marshall, and Mr. Tarkowski over here, we all got to shoot around. Oh, I apologize, Ms. Nye as well. That's right, there was a lot of people there. But we had a great time, a lot of fun, and I cannot shoot a three on an NBA court to save my life. Thank you very much and have a great evening, everyone.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I will confirm, Zack can't shoot to save his life.
Deputy Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, council staff. With some regularity, we come before you to recognize our staff as they do good things in our community. Less regularly, we come before you to recognize our volunteers. So I want to first point out that we have quite a few of them in our audience. Could you all stand for just a minute? This is a, this is a small representation of, of our total numbers of volunteers, but I can tell you that between them and, and the others that we have, they make up for several full-time employees for the town. They provide a lot of incredible service to this community. Tonight, though, we're going to recognize one of them specifically for a police chief's distinguished service citation, so if I can have Bob Adams come down, please? On April 23rd, 2016, at the conclusion of the Prescott Valley Days Parade, the floats were exiting Lake Shore Drive into the open field just east of the BMO Bank. One of the last floats, a low-boy trailer, was rounding the turn when a three-year-old boy fell off and was hanging onto the trailer, being drugged by the trailer. VIP Bob Adams, who was posted at that location, quickly recognized a potentially dangerous situation as the boy could possibly be run over by the trailer. Bob took immediate action, ran forward and grabbed the boy, pushing him back onto the trailer. During this, Bob lost his balance and fell into the street, resulting in injury to his head and severe road rash on his knees and hands. I can personally vouch for that, as I met with Bob in the hospital and he embarrassedly sat there in the, in the hospital bed, trying to refuse any and all treatment the hospital provided, but I think they insisted on a CT scan and there is a brain there, right? Seriously, aside from the joking, uh, Bob did spend some time at the hospital and, and, you know, took some injuries to, to protect that boy's life. Due to the quick actions of VIP Bob, uh, Bob Adams, the three-year-old boy did not suffer any injuries. The Prescott Valley Police Department conveys our sincere appreciation to Bob Adams for his selfless and exceptional act and for demonstrating his commitment to helping his community and those in need. All of our volunteers?
Stay here. Stay down here. Come on down.
So we have Dave Kibers, our lead volunteer, and I apologize, Chris Edelbrock, one of our more recent additions, Dave Damski, been with us for quite a while, and wow, there's a new one I don't recognize. That's good news. Dave?
Dennis?
Bob Dennis? Denny, sorry. And Chris Kissling? Okay. As you can tell, we are expanding the ranks of our volunteers quite quickly and several of these gentlemen have been serving with us from as little as, how long? Two and a half months down to his first month, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much. Keep going.
If I could have Detective Tobin come up? Uh, every quarter, we recognize an officer who goes above and beyond in providing services to victims of domestic violence. Domestic violence, also known as intimate partner violence, is one of the few crimes that the Center for Disease Controls recognizes as a public health crisis. In our opinion, it is preventable, and with the work that our people in our Family Violence Unit are doing, as well as the work that the officers who are going to be recognized tonight are doing, we hope, and I believe, numbers so far this year might indicate, we're starting to drive down the numbers of domestic violence incidents and offenses here in Prescott Valley. So I'll turn it over to Detective Tobin.
Thank you. And first of all, thanks to our volunteers. Police Department could not operate without the volunteers and we have the best in Yavapai County, without a doubt. They're around the station all the time, always in a great mood and helping us out to do the, the stuff that we need to do behind the scenes without getting much credit, so thank you guys for taking the time to recognize them tonight. As the Deputy Chief said, we have a significant stop grant that we operate under, which enables us to run our Family Violence Unit, which is three full-time people, myself, Rachel Montague, and Kathy Harrison, who's our administrative secretary. But in addition to that, we realized that we needed to try to expand our ranks a couple years ago by engaging the patrol op, some of the patrol officers who were interested and wanted to work with us more closely to, on these specific types of problems related to domestic violence, family violence, and sexual assault. So we didn't twist any arms or anything, we put the call out there, and what we like to do is, and recognize these people who go a little bit above and beyond. Uh, they do, you know, all of our officers do a fine job, but, but the ones we recognize with the Officer of the Quarter are ones that have shown a, above and beyond effort in helping us to do our job and accomplish the mission of the Family Violence Unit. So about two years ago, we started doing the Officer of the Quarters, uh, awards, and our first recipient was Sergeant Jake Jackson, you may remember, Sergeant Mike Williams, Officer Jennifer Watson, and Officer Scott Rudolph. And that leads us up to, um, the last quarter of 2015, uh, with Officer Tyler Brown, who was the recipient that quarter, but was unable to attend in December. So tonight, we have Officer Brown, Officer Payne, and, uh, and we're also going to recognize Officer Field for the last three quarters, uh, since, since, uh, October, but Officer Field couldn't make it tonight, he had a prior commitment. But the other two guys are here. Officer Payne and Officer Brown are going to come down. These guys are some of the most modest people I've ever met. I almost had to get a subpoena and a court order to get them here tonight. We were able to stop short of that. I was expecting phone call all day, saying, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it, but thank you guys for coming. So first up, like I said, Officer Brown, and I'll just read you what I wrote, um, it's better than me trying to wing it here. Officer Tyler Brown has been an officer with Prescott Valley PD since 2013. Officer Brown has quickly developed a reputation for doing thorough and complete patrol-level investigations, especially with regards to family violence-related cases. Officer Brown, Officer Brown's diligence and attention to detail have earned him the respect of his peers and many letters of appreciation from the community. Officer Brown was selected to participate in the pilot program to help develop the NAU PVPD, PPD Danger Assessment Tool, which enhances family violence investigations and improves safety for victims in our community. In the fall of 2015, Officer Brown completed an online training program from Johns Hopkins University in administering and evaluating danger assessments. Again, it's an extra duty that he took on in addition to all his other duties. Officer Brown has also taken an active role in mentoring young members of the PVPD Explorer Program and has facilitated several domestic violence-related trainings for the Explorer Post. So the winner of our Officer of the Quarter for last quarter of 2015, Officer Tyler Brown. Officer Brown was complaining a little bit when I came in that his bio wasn't quite long enough, so, not really, he wasn't.
After he's here another 10 years, it'll get longer.
Um, you, would you like for him to?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Come on up.
First and foremost, thank you, James, I appreciate it. I've actually been here since 2014, I was an intern in 2013, but I'll take any credit I get. It's just such an honor to work for Prescott Valley, I love the town, I love the people, and I just genuinely enjoy helping, so, thank you, James, appreciate it.
Good job. And Tyler's wife is here tonight also, as is Officer Payne's wife. So we didn't, also never should miss an opportunity to, to thank them, because we couldn't do what we do without, uh, the support of our families, and I'm sure you guys agree with that. Um, second quarter, our first quarter of 2016 winner was Marshall Field, couldn't be here tonight, so I'll, I'll skip through his stuff real quick, since he's not here and he's not gonna, can't complain to me about his bio not being long enough. Officer Marshall Field's been an officer with Prescott Valley PD since 2012. Been a valued member of the FEU adjunct team since the inception of that unit in 20, in January 2015. Officer Field does CI-level quality investigations and is always willing to assist to complete cases and serve victims whenever needed. Officer Field has also taken on additional responsibilities as the co-leader in, uh, Domestic Violence Instructor and Scenario Evaluator at the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, who's getting ready to start up in a couple weeks, Class 41. In the fall of 2015, Officer Field completed an online, the online training course from Johns Hopkins, um, to administer and evaluate danger assessments, and he also participated in the pilot program when we were trying to la, launch the Dangerous Assessment Tool and was a big help in getting that, uh, tool implemented department-wide in, uh, March. So I will present, I'll accept the Officer of the Quarter Award for Marshall and make sure he gets it. Last up, Officer Robert Payne. Officer Payne has been an officer with Prescott Valley PD since 2014. Officer Payne eagerly volunteered to participate in the NAU, I guess I should say, I eagerly volunteered him to participate? Um, was that fair? No, he, he willingly participated and did a great job in the NAU PVPD, PPD Danger Assessment Pilot Program, also completed the Johns Hopkins Online Course in Evaluating and Administering Danger Assessments. I've heard a lot of feedback from people about, uh, what a great job Officer Payne does, from beginning to end with his cases, and in particular, we have received recently letters of appreciation from the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center and Stepping Stones Women's Shelter, commending Officer Brown for his, um, efforts and his work and his diligence in, in helping crime victims in Yavapai County. So he doesn't think he deserves it, but he really does. So, uh, Officer of the Quarter for second quarter 2016, Robert Payne.
Say something, come on. Say something.
20 minutes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Town of Prescott Valley for having me as an employee with the command staff. I'm surprised that I'm employed here, but I love every second of it. No, I, I love every second of it.
Volunteer, quick.
My wife, obviously, for supporting me through this whole thing, and so she knows that it's not easy, but I really enjoy it, so thank you guys very much. And Detective Tobin for recognizing that, so, thank you.
It's our pleasure. I'd like to have the spouses come down for a picture with them. James, Chief, come on in. Get you all in, you're all part of this.
Thank you guys for taking the time to do this.
Thank you for doing it.
It does mean a lot, we appreciate it.
I want to take this opportunity to tell you how proud we are of all of the members of our police department, sworn civilian, and our volunteers as well. Uh, we know we couldn't have the safe town that we do without every one of you, so thank you very much for all of this.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mike?
Yeah, I'd be happy to say a few words. I think, uh, I'm an avid reader of the police log every day, it's just, uh, something I like to look at, because it kind of gives me the pulse of the community. And one thing that I do notice in that log is that, uh, family violence is a, a big part of that, and so we're, I think the council's very thankful that we have the Family Violence Unit, and I think we have one of the best in the state, and if it wasn't for that unit, I'm not sure where our community would be, so we're, we're very thankful for the unit. Congratulations.
Laura?
As some of the officers know, I play a very small part, um, in family domestic violence, and as a mother of a beautiful daughter who was victimized by this, I can't tell you what it means to me to have you, your unit, so successful and so well-recognized, because that means there will be less family domestic violence. But when it does occur, there would be champions and guardians there, right with them, right beside them, making a difference for their lives so they can go forward. Humbly thank you, all of you.
As I'm sitting up here, I'm just thinking about, I just don't know where we would be today if we didn't have people like you to go out there and put your whole life out there for us. And, uh, just not enough words.
Once again, we had two officers being, uh, and, and a, and a volunteer being recognized. Now, the two officers that were up here, not only do they do their regular job and duties, but they go out of their way and they do that extra. They took the online courses to better themselves, uh, they've taken on other roles and responsibilities that they don't have to. But that's the quality of officers we have throughout the Prescott Valley Police Department, you know? We see it year after year after year as to what these people mean to the community and what they do for the community. So I, I really appreciate the service that you give and, uh, the work that our police department does, the, the, uh, Family Violence Unit, uh, and the work that they're able to, uh, work with the, uh, Yavapai Family Advocacy Center and the Stepping Stones and other organizations within the community that help, uh, the victims of, uh, family violence and abuse, uh, it, the police department makes it very easy for all the cooperation to happen, so, uh, thanks again for your service to our community.
Can I wrap it up real quick, Vice Mayor? Unless there's somebody else wants to say something? One more word from our?
I apologize, Councilman.
Oh, no, no, no worries. I just wanted to say thank you guys for what you do every day, we really appreciate it. I know there's all kinds of stuff on the news, they're talking bad stuff about police, making police look bad. You guys are all awesome, so, thank you.
I'd like to thank you all and staff for giving us the chance to do this. I know that we come before you with some regularity, but I think that the time that we spend doing this is incredibly valuable. Something that government sometimes doesn't do as well as we should is recognize and celebrate successes, and that's what we're doing here tonight, so thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is comments and communications. Do we have anything on here? Larry, I believe you have something to share with the world.
Uh, I sure do. Vice Mayor and Council, uh, today we, we received very good information, uh, and, uh, what it was concerning was the financial health of the Town of Prescott Valley. Uh, on, on a routine basis, the bond rating agencies that rate every city and town, uh, in the United States, and they also do it internationally, uh, they go ahead and, and set ratings for, uh, the financial health of organizations. Uh, they are Moody's, Fitch, and Standard and Poor's. And, uh, last week, or two weeks ago, we've been working with Fitch, it was their turn to, uh, go ahead and take a look at the financial health of the Town of Prescott Valley. And I am very pleased to go ahead and, uh, and share with you, uh, that the Town of Prescott Valley, uh, received, uh, an upgrade in our bond rating, uh, from an A minus, or a double A minus rating, which is a good rating, uh, to a double A plus rating. We're one step away from being triple A, and for a community our size, that's fantastic. And, and in the five-page document that they sent out today, uh, they justified why they made a two-step increase in the, uh, bond rating for the Town of Prescott Valley. Number one was excellent policymaking, uh, that has been done since their last rating. Number two, the reduction of overall debt for the Town of Prescott Valley, and I, I did pass something out, uh, that shows that since '07, '08, we've gone from, I believe it's 120 million, down to roughly 60 million, and the per capita debt is ridiculously low, I believe 1,400 per capita. That, for a municipality, that is extremely low. In addition to that, they talked about conservative, uh, financial practices, and they also talked about having the, uh, policy, uh, decisions that have been made that go ahead and guarantee that revenue is sufficient to not only service debt, but to provide outstanding services. So with that, congratulations to you all, and a special, uh, thank you to our, uh, Management Services Department and Bill Coppey, uh, for helping set that very conservative approach, uh, to, uh, our budgeting, uh, that we do, uh, and you saw that contained in the budget that you just approved, uh, back the last week of June. Uh, we continue to grow, but we do it in a very financially sound fashion, and it's very nice to have an outside agency review all of our documents and come up with that same conclusion. It, it's so much better when an outside source says, you're doing well, and so you don't have to listen to Bill and I going ahead and, uh, saying the same thing. So thank you all for your part that you play in that, and we thank the citizens of Prescott Valley for going ahead and, um, all of us working together, growing this town. But that's a huge step forward with a two-step rating increase.
Okay, thank you. I'd like you and your next department head meeting to please thank all of them for the hard work that they do, because everyone shares in this news, so, thank you. Okay, next is the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. A, approving the June 16 and 23rd work study and council meeting minutes. B, approving the June 21st, 2016 Selection Committee minutes. C, approving a grant agreement between the Town of Prescott Valley on behalf of the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition and Arizona Commerce Authority. Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition and Arizona Commerce Authority. D, approving the purchase of a G255-2000 Caterpillar 148 grader from Arizona Department of Transportation through the State of Arizona Surplus Property Program in the total amount of $26,000. E, approving the purchase of a hot patch body and trailer KM International KM 8000T and Ribco Roller Mini from Baller Holding Corporation DBA Baller Equipment in the amount of $43,428.52. F, awarding the purchase of a new tractor flail mower to Bingham Equipment Company in the total bid amount of up to $91,539.87. G, approving a transfer from the replacement fund to the police grant fund. H, approving the law enforcement K-9 Fund Grant Agreement, accepting the grant award. I, accepting the 100 Club of Arizona Safety Enhancement Stipend Award. J, approving accounts payable. And I would accept a motion.
I make a motion. Won't come up.
Not coming up. Nope, I think we're gonna have to do voice.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, consent agenda as read by, uh, voice vote or electronic as needed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And we set the vote if possible and otherwise call.
Okay, we can set it, let's see what happens. Okay, I have a vote from Stephen Marshall for yes, a yes from Councilmember Mallory. Anybody else?
Uh-uh.
Councilmember Whiting, yes. Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
I was just thinking that, that happens.
Vice Mayor, that passes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1970, approving final development plan FDP 16-011, a medical marijuana grow facility. You're up.
Great, uh, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, for your consideration this evening, I have an application, a request from William Stevens, Principal for Business Management Services International, for approval of a final development plan to develop a medical marijuana cultivation facility. This project is proposed on an approximate eight-and-a-half acre parcel located in the Big Sky Industrial Park north of Valley Road between Enterprise Parkway and Fane Road. The current classification is M1PAD, Industrial General Limited Planned Area Development. The use is first allowed as a matter of right in the C3 zoning district, subject to regu- regulations in the Prescott Valley Town Code. The current zoning classification and underlying land use designation are the appropriate designations for this use. In 2010, the voters of Arizona approved Proposition 203, the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, the AMMA. This provides for medical use, possession, and cultivation of marijuana by and for persons suffering from debilitating medical conditions. The AMMA authorizes municipalities to adopt reasonable zoning restrictions that limit the use of land for registered facilities to specific areas. The town of Prescott Valley developed standards for this use through the passage of ordinance number 715, 753, excuse me. According to the Prescott Valley Town Code, the maximum floor area of a cultivation facility is not to be greater than 3,000 square feet, but allows for the ex- expansion of this standard by approval of a use permit through the Board of Adjustments. The applicant has, uh, applied for and was granted a use permit, UP 16-001, on June 27th, 2016, to increase the allowable floor area to accommodate this project. The project will develop in two phases. The facility will be, be, will be developed in accordance with all town and state regulations, which provide for standards relating to building security and lighting throughout the facility. FDP 16-011 is in compliance with all Prescott Valley General Plan and all applicable town codes. The proposed plan provides adequate onsite parking and circulation and will substantially comply with the submitted plan. The town will benefit from the collection of transaction privilege taxes associated with the construction and operation of this development. This proposed FDP is in conformance with the zoning, the land use designation. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FDP 16-011. And, uh, Mr. Stevens is here, um, in case the council has any questions for him.
Any questions?
Steven?
I don't have any questions. I'd make a motion if we're ready for it.
If there's no question.
All right. So, a motion to authorize the mayor or vice mayor in his absence to sign Resolution Number 1970, approving final development plan FDP 16-011, a medical marijuana grow facility by voice and electronic vote.
You have a second?
I'll second it, Vice Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Can you set the vote, Diane?
I have yes votes, votes from Councilmember Grossman, Councilmember Mallory, Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Whiting, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
I'm going to abstain, and I have a statement I wish to make. I'm acutely aware of the broad misuse of medical marijuana, and I cannot in good conscience vote yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1971, approving final development plan FDP 16-010, Advanced Auto Parts.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, this application is a request by Garrett Johnson of Armstrong Development, Agent for Advanced Auto Parts, for approval of an approximate 7,000-square-foot commercial building and associated parking to house advanced auto parts, an automotive parts and accessories retailer. This development is located, or proposed to be located, on an approximate, uh, .86 acre parcel known as Outlot 4 of the Glassford Hill Marketplace. This parcel sits on the southwest corner of North Glassford Hills Road, south of Lake Fort, Lake Shore Drive, and west of Glassford Hills Road. Adjacent businesses include Walmart and Maverick. The current zoning classification is C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Service Planned Area Development. The current zoning classification and underlying land use designation of community commercial are appropriate for this use. FDP 16-010 is in compliance with the Prescott Valley General Plan and all applicable town codes. It also meets or will meet the requirements for commercial PADs under the town code. The proposed plan provides adequate onsite parking and circulation and will substantially comply with the submitted plan. The town will benefit from the collection of, uh, TPT taxes associated with the construction and operation of this development. Therefore, um, as it, uh, complies with all code, uh, staff therefore recommends approval of FDP 16-010.
Any questions?
Garrett Johnson is also here, um, from Advanced Auto Parts.
I'll make a motion if, if we're ready for that. Uh, motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1971, approving final development plan FDP 16-010, Advanced Auto Parts by electronic invoice vote.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Diane, can you set the vote, please?
I have votes of approval from Councilmember Grossman, Councilmember Mallory, Councilmember Marshall, Councilmember Nye, Councilmember Whiting, Vice Mayor Anderson. How do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Prescott Valley. Okay, item C, consideration of awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Serv-, Earth Resources Corporation, in an amount up to $144,281. Approve an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Davin Associates in the amount of $23,620, and approve a budget transfer amount of $27,901, Glassford Hills Summit Trail Castle Drive widening, CIP number P41.2. Welcome.
Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. Um, just have a couple of exhibits for you guys. Uh, this one is actually presented to you all at last Thursday's, um, work study. And, uh, it just shows some of the, uh, activities that have been taking place in the Castle Drive area over the last several months. Uh, most notably, uh, the, uh, Summit Trail Parking Lot, which, uh, has direct access off of Castle Drive and, uh, can accommodate parking for 24 vehicles. And also the, uh, newly constructed Summit Trail, which, uh, starts at the parking lot and goes all the way to the summit of, uh, Glassford Hill. It's a little over two miles. Uh, both of those projects were completed last month and have since, uh, become a, uh, quite a popular destination for, uh, hiking and biking enthusiasts. So, uh, it's a, a, a great addition to the town's trail system and a, a great amenity. Uh, this project, um, ties into those projects in that, uh, the intent is to, uh, improve the access to, uh, those amenities. Uh, right now Castle Drive is a very narrow roadway. It's anywhere from, uh, 12 to 14 feet in width, and you're trying to squeeze two lanes through that, uh, it's, it's very narrow. Uh, so, the, uh, the scope of this project is to, uh, pretty much remove the existing roadway and reconstruct, uh, a new roadway at a 24-foot width. Uh, there'll also be on the west side, some, uh, roadway shoulder work and improvements. Uh, we'll be doing a little bit of drainage ditch work, replacing some culverts. And, uh, on the east side, there will be, uh, mostly the, uh, driveways along there are gravel driveways, and where those driveways, uh, will have been impacted by any of the construction, we'll be replacing gravel in those areas. Uh, there's a, the extents of the project are, uh, from Antelope Lane to Sunset Lane, roughly about 2,400 feet. Uh, timeline is, uh, three weeks. It's a, a pretty simple project. Uh, there's three items, uh, on the, uh, consent agenda here, and I'll just read them right from here that staff, uh, would like, uh, uh, council to approve. Uh, the first is, uh, consideration of awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Three Source Corporation, in an amount up to $144,281. Uh, also, uh, just, uh, of note, they were also the low bidder on the, uh, Summit Parking Lot, and, uh, do have some familiarity with, uh, uh, activities in that area and some concerns, and, uh, uh, they're familiar with traffic flows and that sort of thing. So, uh, we're hopeful that, you know, that will, uh, be a, a key element in, uh, a smooth and successful, uh, a project. Second item, which is a typical protocol, is, uh, to improve an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with, uh, Davin Associates in the amount of $23,620. And, uh, this is for, uh, Construction Administration, uh, Administrative Services. It's typical protocol that we carry our design professionals through, uh, the construction phase of the project, so that's what that's for. And, uh, the third item is, um, approve a budget transfer amount of $27,901, and that's to, uh, help facilitate, uh, the project. This is my other exhibit, and this is, uh, a typical notice of construction that, uh, we like to send to residents, uh, for our, uh, capital improvement projects. Uh, there's a few ways that we distribute this. Uh, we can mail them. Uh, often we go door-to-door and hand them out. Sometimes we do a combination of both. Uh, we often will take a snippet from it and include it in the town news or even post it on the town's website. Uh, so, this is the, uh, the one for this project, and, uh, it's pretty typical of what we like to distribute. Uh, it'll just show a brief, uh, overview of the project. Uh, we like to include some sort of a stick figure exhibit or some sort of an exhibit that'll show, uh, location of the project and the extent of the project as, as here. We also like to show a timeline, which will, um, you know, just give folks an idea of what to expect. And then down at the bottom, we like to put, uh, contact information for the residents to put them in contact with a staff member who has direct involvement with the project. Uh, so, this is typical here. Uh, also note on this one, this particular one here, uh, 6:00 PM next Thursday, we'll, we will be holding a, uh, a resident meeting, and it will be, uh, onsite at the Summit Parking Lot, Summit Trail Parking Lot. Um, and it'll be just a, sort of a meet and greet. We'll have plans there. Uh, we're, we're hoping people, whether they live in the area or not, will come and meet staff, look at plans, uh, ask questions, uh, you know, we can address concerns. Uh, so, um, that will be, uh, next Thursday. And, uh, with that, uh, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. Having been the recipient of, you know, improvements, it, it can be difficult and disconcerting. And I watched all of your teams work so hard to make it so much easier for all of us, and I want to compliment you in advance because I know you're going to do the same thing here. I also want to compliment you for having that community meeting. Even if no one shows up, you did the right thing, you made the effort. And I, I just want to applaud you and thank you in advance.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I was just wondering, uh, I do want to thank you, and I know we had talked about that last time, the neighborhood meeting. I think that'll be well-received and it'll be great to hear their input. I've been on that street, uh, a few times, and it's, uh, it's, it's a very narrow street. So, I think the, the community and the residents in the neighborhood will be thankful for the, the widening. One thing I was wondering was, we'll be tearing out everything that's in there now relative to any roadway material and starting anew, right? So...
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And when will that kick off, if we approve that tonight?
Uh, we're looking at Notice to Proceed July 25th.
July 25th, so, just a couple of weeks. Okay, thank you.
And I just might, uh, add as well that we've also distributed, uh, similar notices. Uh, today we went door-to-door and distributed, uh, notices to residents for the, uh, Viewpoint Overlay Project, which is, uh, gonna kick off this Monday. And, uh, also PV Pipeline, um, we've distributed them there on several occasions. That project is also under construction. And, uh, we do field calls from people that have read the flyer and have questions. And, uh, just last week, I was out on Roadrunner and, uh, was, uh, talking with the lady that had questions about, um, uh, the PV Pipeline Trail. So, uh, you know, it does work. It is a, a good, uh, tool for, uh, information and...
Rick?
Thank you for that.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to have you, uh, first of all, I mean, it, it's a great project, well-needed, and I know I, I keep getting, uh, questions about that, but the, the other projects you just mentioned, I keep getting, uh, questions about that also. And, uh, it's nice that I have it, you know, the information to give them. And I tell them, I said, "If you have any questions, just call the department and, you know, Public Works, and they'll be more than happy to answer it." Uh, just to repeat for the, uh, for the audience that, that didn't hear it when we were talking about it last week, uh, the, I know you, you, you work very hard to make a minimum impact to the community in that area. Uh, what will the hours of, uh, construction be? And, uh, I know that you just mentioned it, so it, it's nice to know that there's always a contact number, so...
Well, uh, if you're talking Castle Drive, which is typical, typical on all of our projects, uh, town code is from 7:00 to 7:00. 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 at night. 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 at night. Typically, we like to see 7:00 to 5:00. Especially in residential areas, we don't want heavy equipment starting up at, you know, 6:00 in the morning. So we will be expecting probably 7:00 to 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Sure. Thank you.
I'll make a motion if you want.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the award of a construction contract to the lowest, well, we gotta wait for, oh yeah, never mind. Brain just went. Motion to approve the award of a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation, in an amount up to $144,281. Approve an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Davin Associates in an amount of $23,620, and approve the budget transfer by electronic and voice vote.
Mr. Vice Mayor, be happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Diane, can you set the vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Time to get to work.
Okay, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Any such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Excuse me. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. I see we have a member of the community. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Council, I am here as a representative of the Hope Still Floats Committee.
Can you give us your name, please?
I am Sandra Arquette.
Thank you.
Hope Still Floats is going to benefit the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center. We're going to have a dinner, live music, and also silent and...
Live.
Live, thank you.[1658.13][1658.13](LAUGHING). The dinner will be, and I apologize ahead of time, you were sent invitations saying Friday. It is Saturday, August 20, beginning at about 6:00 PM. The tickets are $50 each, or for a table of 10, it's $450. We think it's gonna be a grand evening. We have a great organization that we are benefiting, and we are looking forward to it and hoping to see you there.
What's the entertainment?
Steve Anabelli.
Annabelli.
That's the man.[1699.47][1699.47](LAUGHING). Dinner is both chicken and a beef dish. It will be very tasty.
Anything else?
Nothing from me.
Thank you.
Just hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that has anything? And we have the last item. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, a second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Set the vote, please.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
That is approved unanimously.
I'm surprised. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll have just a brief recess.